I'm going to call this Mashpee Public Schools School Committee Business Meeting to order. It's 5:30 on October 19th. The first item is the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to flag, United States of America, and to republic which serves us. One nation under God, and with God, we live, and with justice for all. Thank you. I also want to say that the Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoag people who have lived and been sustained on this territory for more than 10,000 years. And next, we need to ratify the agenda for tonight. We were notified once after the agenda had been distributed that Roxanne and the Education Department cannot be here tonight. So that's one amendment that I'm aware of. So that's the 550 update from the tribe. Are there any other items that need to be modified?
So Delia is not going to be with us, but I do have her report.
That is going to be tough for you to do that justice.
I'll try to be expressive.
Yes, very expressive and smiley. Okay, anything else? All right, then I'll take a motion to ratify.
I'll make that motion to ratify the agenda for tonight.
Thanks, Matt.
Well, second.
Second by Kathy. Any further discussion? All right, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So the agenda for tonight's ratified. Do we have any public comment?
There is none at this time.
Excellent. I love it. Had a schedule already. Approval of the minutes for September 21st. Those are in your packet. Do we have any edits to those? For Sherry. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. All right, motion from Kathy?
I'll second.
Second from Matt. Any discussion? Do you need a few more minutes to read the minutes? There you go. Okay. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Vote yes as well. Those are approved. All right. Very excited to hear from the Coombe School. So who do we have?
I'm Katherine McDonough.
Okay.
This is Farmer Cody Jones, my fiance.
Oh, wonderful.
And we have titled our presentation, KCC Plus Cranberries Plus Hortout. Broadening Our Community Connections.
Okay, wait. Do the introductions again, just.
I'm Katherine McDonough, and this is Cody Jones. Our presentation is called KCC Plus Cranberries Plus Hortout. Broadening Our Community Connections.
You can do it down.
Okay. So as I just said, my name is Katherine McDonough. I teach pre-K over at the Coombe School. And this is Cody Jones for a fondly known as Farmer Cody, my fiance. And he works for Hortout.
So I am the here-gain-chance specialist for about 150 cranberry growers across over there. For Hortout, we actually provide technology to farmers from Alcala to Cheyenne, bridging future technologies, state technology, past technology together, truly streamline farming operations. Environmental sustainability is a big part of the platform with our technology. And especially the end goal of our technology will be to grow our growers here as to lessen the bottom line when you have to deal with growth.
So Cody, over the years, has done so much for our school. Everything from going on cranberry field trips, as we're about to present to you, to bringing in our farm animals for the kids to see, to playing with me at the Giving Tree every year. And he and Hortout both also contributed financially to our big fundraiser, the Dance Off every year as well. So I just want to say a big thank you to Cody and all his involvement over the years. So why cranberries? Cranberries are one of three native, three fruits native to North America. When I heard that, it was staggering. Every other fruit we eat is from somewhere else. Blueberries, concret grapes, and cranberries are the only things native to North America. And cranberries are one of two fruits that are grown on Cape Cod. They've also been utilized and harvested by Wampanoags for over 12,000 years. And on a personal note, that's how we met Cody's from Wisconsin. And he was here on a business trip at a cranberry bog, and that's how we met. So three years ago, I approached the fabulous Paula Bell about piloting a field trip for pre-K to bring them to a cranberry bog. And because it was new and a little bit far away, we just took two classes. We took them to Gilmore Cranberry. It was an awesome day. Everyone had so much fun. And the biggest thing was that the adults, everyone from the adults to the volunteers, to the staff members, they all had just as much fun as the kids. So imagine my disappointment when COVID hit and we couldn't go anywhere or do anything. But imagine my excitement this year when finally things were opened up. Because our pilot went so well, it was decided that all four classes should go on this trip. And because we had greater numbers, we needed a bigger venue. So we reached out to our good friends Cass and Erin, who own Benson's Pond. Cass is a third-generation cranberry farmer, and his wife Erin is a sixth-generation, fifth-generation dairy farmer. And they have a fabulous facility. They've turned an old greenhouse into a wedding venue, which is actually pretty historical.
So yeah, the greenhouse at Benson's Pond was built in 1930, about before everybody brought their fruit to its original location. Everything had to be screened and processed, stored, and sold from the original visual park. So the 1930s greenhouse is one of the last remaining original cranberry greenhouses in Massachusetts.
And they renovated it recently into a gorgeous wedding venue. So it had not only the bathrooms that we needed, but the facilities as well to house everything we wanted to do. They were very generous. We didn't have to pay anything for the trip itself. The only cost was about $100 for the materials and the cost of the buses to take us there. So we're very grateful to our friends at Benson's Pond. The first part of the field trip was the bog tour. And we were lucky enough that they had a hayride to keep all the kids on. Originally, there was supposed to be someone else driving the tractor, but it is a working farm, so we kind of had to roll with the punches. And Cody actually ended up driving the tractor and doing the bog tour all at the same time. But that's what happens on a farm. So he took the, oh.
So for the bog tour, the middle picture here, oh, never mind. So the first thing I was able to show the kids as we drove past, like I said, it is a working farm, didn't want to get in the growers' way, especially there's a truck coming to load the fruit. But this shows the actual pumping of the cranberries out of the bog into the truck. Once in the truck, they go to ocean spray for further processing and storage. Next, I was able to bring the kids to show them what the floating cranberries look like a little more in-depth, got them off the tractor, got them as close to the bog as we could safely. And then what I jumped in the water, showed them what cranberries look like, how they all float. Then also, once we got off that, Cass and I, we were picking that bog the day before. We left one section of that bog. I was able to show the kids the water picker. So I was able to slow the machine down, show them how the reel actually spins, set it down in the water slowly, so the fruit starts popping up slowly. Then I was able to speed up the machine to our operating speed and do a few laps to make the fruit float, and they really enjoyed seeing that. Then also, we got back on the tractor, drove a little farther down the bog road. And Benson's Pond, the history of that property, it was built in 1920s as a triple-C operation from President Roosevelt. So they actually drained Benson's Pond with a pump and then just planted cranberries in the bottom of it. So there are two existing bogs of Benson's that are over 100 years old. So we were able to show what a 100-year-old bog looks like and a brand-new bog looks like. The one right next door to it is brand-new, but planted in August. So it was cool for the kids to see just what 100-year-old cranberry vines look like, old, raggy, and then the brand-new ones that are coming in nice and strong. So that was cool for the kids to see. And then also, the volunteers got to know a little bit more about Massachusetts cranberry history.
So while two classes were going on the bog tour, then they had lunch. And we got to eat our lunch in this gorgeous wedding venue. As I said, it was a fabulous facility. We're so grateful. The other two classes, what one group was doing, the bog tour and lunch, the other two classes are doing the centers. The first one is cranberry building, and I ended up running that one myself. And so it was just toothpicks and cranberries. And we encouraged the kids to make a variety of 2D and 3D shapes. Patrick McLaughlin built a house. It was incredible. Some of them got smooshed when we put them in the bags, but it was so creative, endless building, and they all had a blast.
So Catherine's dad, he actually did our bog in the cup center. And what we did was just miniaturize how we actually build cranberry bogs in real life. So normally cranberry bogs are built with a layer of gravel and then peat for to retain water and then sand for drainage. Then the vines go on top. All we did was instead of having, you know, two, three feet of material, condensed it to a cup, and it'll actually plant with real live cranberry vines that if taken care of, can actually stem fruit in about two to three years.
Sharon Falone swears that one of the ones that she had on her windowsill had two baby cranberries on it the next spring. So it is possible. The next center was Dancing Cranberries. This one was run by my mom, Christine. And in this one, the kids examined sink and float. And so we learned a lot about how the cranberries have air pockets, which helps them float. That's why wet picking works. But then we compared that to crazens, which don't have any air. And the bubbles in seltzer, when the craisin sinks, the bubbles stick to it and lift it back up. So it kind of looks like the cranberries are dancing. There was a lot of exploration and just open-ended questioning about cause and effect. And having kids make predictions on why something's happening or not happening.
The next center was cranberry sorting and bouncing. Just a brief overview of this machine. This is a Bailey separator built in 1929 by the Bailey Company in South Carver that no longer exists. But what this machine does, it actually allows the berries to bounce over boards. And depending on what board they bounce over, all the fresh fruit that's ready to go to market comes out of the chute into the boxes. And then what's kind of depicted here, there's three boxes underneath here. So all the small fruit, that's still good, goes in there for pie berries. The middle chute can be screened again. And the fruit that doesn't bounce in the third box that you can't see, that's all for compost. So that's, then what the kids are able to do after seeing this machine work is do their own bouncing and sorting on this table as well.
And the last center was the cranberry dissection taste test and grafting. So kids cut open cranberries with a little plastic knife, saw what was inside, the skin, the flesh, the air pockets, the seeds, and then they got to try them. And we had a lot of thumbs downs for that one. But then we compared that to cranberry juice, which has the sugar in it. We told them, oh, that's how we make cranberries sweet for the things that we enjoy, like cranberry chocolates and juice and that stuff. And then we grafted our preferences. And I can't help it. These faces are so incredibly hilarious. This is one of the best parts because kids have an idea of what cranberries are because of the juice that they drink. And so it's a rude awakening when they find out what fresh cranberries taste like. Although some of them really did like it, so that was interesting. We know everyone had a blast, and we think that they learned a lot, but don't take it from us.
Daddy, what did you like about the field trip? And what did you learn about cranberries? Did you learn them? Lucas, what did you learn about the field trip we went on?
I learned. The haywire.
I did too. What did you learn?
I learned how to stay on the tractor.
What are they growing at that farm?
Cranberries.
Do they grow in a tree, or do they grow?
They grow in water.
They do. What do they taste like?
They taste like juice.
They turn it into juice, don't they? Thank you, Lucas.
Hey, Mom DeGloz, what was your favorite part of our field trip? And what was your, what did you learn about cranberries? What was your favorite part?
Eat it.
Eat it now. What kind of cranberries did you like that?
I done.
You liked the fresh cranberries? They weren't too sour?
Nice. And then we went. What did you learn?
I learned to like the tractor.
You learned the tractor, it did farmer, Farmer Cody drove the tractor. But the tractor did what? And it pulled you and your friends around the cranberry bog.
Hey, Michael, what was your favorite part of our field trip?
The cranberries.
What did you like best about them?
They were sour.
You liked that they were sour? That's awesome. What else did you learn?
Mama, we are learning about that thing that like did that.
You remember the picker and the spitting of the fruit out? Good remembering. Did you learn anything else?
Raven, we recently went on a field trip. Do you remember where we went? And what did you learn about that field trip? Aaron, tell us about the cranberry field trip. What did you learn?
I think I lost them.
What was your favorite thing, Erin?
I didn't like the juice.
You didn't like the juice? Hi, Lily. Lily, what did you like about our field trip? It was pretty good, wasn't it?
Hey, Dana, what was your favorite part of our field trip? You're right, they do float. Did you like tasting them? Yeah, what do they taste like?
Hey, Avery, we went on a field trip. Do you remember where we went? And what was something that you really liked that day? Bella, what did you like about the field trip we went on? And what did you learn on that field trip? Did you learn to eat the cranberries? Or did you discover the taste of the cranberries? And what did they taste like? And thank you very much.
So we did have a lot of favorites for the hayride and the bus, but that was perfect because the week prior was transportation, or sorry, that week was transportation. So the whole bus ride and the tractor and the trailer went perfectly altogether with our curriculum. Overall, the trip was a fabulous success. We all had an amazing time. It was even perfect weather. We couldn't be more grateful, and we can't wait for next year. But when Cody was filling out his Cory at the We Are Mashpee store, Consuelo actually mentioned that maybe there was a future for Hortout Mashpee.
So yeah, she, the lady at the store is really nice. And she asked me what I was doing and like what I do with cranberries. I've mentioned the technology. So what we do is actually put synthetic plant roots and thermometers in the bogs to let the growers know when to irrigate, how long to irrigate for, when to put chemicals and fertilizers on. And if they really subscribe, that we actually automate the whole automation process. So as soon as they flip the switch on in the spring, they don't have to touch their sprinkler system until the fall. That was one thing that she may be recommended for the robotics club in Mashpee. I wish that when I was coming up, there was more ag technology or agriculture taught in schools. That was something I didn't know was my passion in life until I graduated college. My first job out of college as a farmhand on a cranberry marsh, found that that's what I wanted to do my entire life. Had no idea that agriculture was more of a feasible career path when I was leaving school.
And you do partner with schools already?
So yeah, so currently, the only school I partner with here in Massachusetts is Wareham Middle School. They have two mini cranberry bogs out back at their school that they dry pick. That's run in conjunction with AD Makepeace and Cranberry Grower Service. So the three companies, Hortout, Makepeace, and Cranberry Grower Service, help the students at Wareham Middle actually grow cranberries or dry pick that they can sell in their own school store. But with Hortout being a larger company, and we do a lot of research, we do partner with universities like the University of Massachusetts, especially their cranberry station in Wareham, the University of Wisconsin's cranberry research station at Robinson Creek in Black River Falls, Wisconsin, and the University of Laval up in Quebec City.
And on a personal note, I just want to say thank you to my family, to Cody, and to my parents for helping me make this possible 2019 and 2022. We really hope that we can make this happen again. And thank you to our PTO and to, I know, all the administrative staff who had to help us with bussing and scheduling and all that stuff down to the very last minute. Without everyone of their help, it would not have gone as well as it did.
Wow.
Are there any questions?
Do you need chaperones?
We'd love that. Love to have you.
So I'm just not clear on one thing. Is he your fiance? No, that was so great. I was thinking we should be doing a field trip for like staff and teachers too because the history and the culture of Massachusetts and sort of like what's special about Cape Cod, but also just this part of the country, like you said, being so connected to agriculture in that way is that you taught me a lot. And when I hear screen room, I think of like a movie. So I was kind of like, I wonder what a greenhouse is. It sounds like a place where you watch things. So that's where they used to like separate the crop?
So yeah, so when, back when that facility was built, Benson's Pond was all dry pick. There was no wet picking. So all the dry pick cranberries would come in bags and go into the upstairs facility where that's where all those old Bailey machines. At one point, there were 40 of those Bailey machines in that room. So also, back then, when the place is built, kids didn't go to school in October, November. They're all working cranberry harvest. So all the parents were running the sorters upstairs, and all the kids were running, taking the screened fruit, bringing it, all the good fruit downstairs to the basement where all the centers were. They built that underground for cool storage back in way back when. Then all the composting fruit or rotten fruit was actually brought out to another compost pile nearby.
Wow. So.
Oh, I just want to mention that we did, three years ago, Cody was able to come in the day before the field trip. And we have a PowerPoint presentation that explains the process to the kids to pre-teach all that information. This year, I had to do the presentation because he got called to harvest. But I shared that with all the teachers so that the kids could see and learn about what they were about to experience. So they had that frame of reference when we went there. And we talked a lot about dry picking and wet picking and all that stuff prior to the field trip.
That's awesome. Now?
I just think it's really cool because like especially at that age, like you know, you could even see like from the video like that they were retaining like information from it. Like obviously, some of them were getting caught from like recess, and they're like active still and all that. You can see their vigilante, but they were still like, yeah, I remember it was sour. Yeah, we went on a tractor. And like, you know, those are the experiences that are going to kind of like stick with them forever. Yeah, so that's really cool.
I had a first grader come up to me last year, and he was like, remember when we went to the cranberry bog? And I went, who are you? And he goes, I was in Mrs. Williams class. And I was like, oh, I had no idea. But he remembered everything about it and just came right up to me and talked about it two years later, and it was two and a half years later. And it was really, those things are the things that stick. And we're so grateful to be able to provide these experiences to our kids.
Thank you.
And again, I can't thank my friends, Cass and Erin at Benson's Pond. Two of the years I do a lot of side work for them, just out of my heart. All the goodness of their hearts, they're able to open up their greenhouse and actually bring a living crew in before and after us with no charge to us to make sure that their facilities were up to their standards. What was my short story?
We called it a lot of favors.
Wow, we're going to have to get them a little something. Thank you.
It's so beautiful.
Yeah, I'm sure Consuelo will have something that we can send them. Dawn?
I think what you guys, can you hear me now? I think what you guys have done is fantastic. I was just mentally thinking, how can we improve on this and make this more of a learning experience or expand it into other areas and use this as a concept that grows metaphorically so that kids do really understand food doesn't come from the grocery store, right? Milk doesn't come in bottles. There's a lot of people who have to do a lot of hard work in order for that to happen. And have, you know, having grown up in the country, I think that's a sad thing that people don't have that appreciation for what is really required. And I think if they did, similar to what you guys are showing, I think they'd have a better appreciation and be better stewards of the land and of our environment in total. So I commend you and, you know, I commend you also for trying to be farmers in this day and age. This is, you know, so great job. Thank you.
So one thing I am working on is trying to find a facility that can handle more classes here on the cave itself. Like Catherine said, three years ago, we were able to go to Gilmore Cranberry in South Carver, about 45 minutes, 45, 50 minutes away. So, but again, they had two bathrooms and two separate buildings, and the facilities just weren't quite up to what we needed for four classrooms. Benson's Pond's 10 minutes closer. It's honestly two minutes off 495 and off the Carver exit. But they also have, you know, they have four bathrooms there. They have the tractor for the hayride, and everything's more essentially condensed. But I am working, trying to work with a grower that I work really closely with and actually is working part-time for him now. He's got six acres in Marson's Mills. So we're hoping to kind of bring cranberries a little closer to home on that aspect. And we're also trying to work with another grower in Marson's Mills that has more acreage, can show more. But again, we're limited on the facility, especially for having a small job like that.
And the timing with the other thing, because we're at the mercy of when they need to pick, and when the fruit is ripe, they pick it. So we only had one date and no rain dates. We were really lucky that the weather cooperated.
Excellent, thank you.
I just want to echo thanks. I mean, this is definitely going to be a core memory for those kids. And I think it's very important that we understand, you know, from the education piece of the agricultural process, but also, this is like where we live. And this is what our state and an opportunity, like you said, you know, knowing there's an opportunity, because I'm a firm believer, if you can see it, you can be it. So seeing that as an opportunity, I think is very important for the kids, especially at that age. You know, it's very shaping. And, you know, I get that video in the Cranberry Museum because I went to the Idaho Potato Museum this summer. And let me tell you, those videos are fantastic. So like, get them out, free publicity for Cranberry growers of America. Like, put them everywhere, because that was the best video ever.
Yeah, and I would also add that, you know, Cody mentioned that the connection to robotics and maybe Miss Howe in terms of the engineering aspects. But I also think that we're always looking for, I've judged the science fair a number of years, and our students are always looking for like real-world science projects that they can explore and learn about something locally. I've seen a lot of different projects over the years that relate to our water quality, for example. But something like an agricultural crop, I think that would spur a lot of interest from our students. And so I think we need to get you connected with the Science Department Chair up at the high school and let them know about potential opportunities to engage our older students. So it's fantastic.
And even though his tech is, can be very complicated, it's also, there are some simpler applications. Like my mom uses one of his probes in her potato garden to let her know when to water. So it can even be used on a small scale and not necessarily experimental. But it teaches kids about water conservation and how hard plants are working to get that water, especially with the few, with the droughts that we've had recently. Water conservation is more important than ever, and Hortout Tech is the best at helping the plants grow as well as they can with as little water as possible.
Well, you guys got to take this on the road. You guys are, you're a great team.
Cranberry ambassadors.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
And we hope you all have a wonderful night.
Thanks. Yeah, sure.
I just want to add, when you definitely teach, Catherine is definitely, and she is, what you see in this particular endeavor.
Is what you see every day in her classrooms. So those little preschoolers are super lucky. And to Farmer Cody, to acknowledge that anyone who's in a relationship with a teacher
can become a family of that teacher, like their parents as well, knows that you are fully involved in what that teacher does. And we all have experienced that with our own family. So thank you for all that you do for our students, and Catherine in particular, and for Mashpee. So we're happy to have you.
I have a whole place, because with my job, I'm up and down all hours of the night. She just knows that question, if my phone rings.
And if you do go to the Giving Tree of Mashpee Coombe School, you will listen to Catherine sing and Cody. And if you do go to the Giving Tree of Mashpee Community School, you will listen to Catherine sing and Cody play.
Play the guitar, I think. Do you sing too?
Drums.
Drums. You play the guitar?
I do. My brother played last year as well.
Oh, okay. Anyway, they are a great combination. They're musicians too.
Wow. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. And hopefully you might have found a good venue for your wedding.
We're actually trying to do it like in our backyard. That's the kind of farmers we are like, everything's DIY.
That's good.
Well, the cranberry bog is pretty pretty. We might not take advantage of that one.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Paul, that was awesome. Okay, so we are right on time. And next we have superintendent's report.
Well, I'm going to read Delia's report.
Okay, great. Well.
I'm going to read it just as she wrote it. Good afternoon. So much has happened since our last meeting. Honestly, this past month has just been so amazing. I could just see her doing it. And by the way, the field hockey varsity team won their game tonight. That was according to Ms. Lopes.
First time in three years.
First year, first win in three years. Anyway, so Delia's having a good time. Last week, the Mashpee Middle High School had an amazing spirit week. Each day, every grade was assigned a time period to dress as, color, and theme. The ninth graders were assigned the theme minions.
And so many freshmen showed up to school in yellow outfits and a baseball hat.
Excuse me. Her mic is going in and out. Can you swap with her? Thank you.
Then of course, on Friday, is it on? It's red, though.
They're supposed to be blue.
No, it's blue. Yeah, it's blue.
But it's blinking red.
I'll do you that loud. Okay.
Then of course, on Friday, everyone was assigned the same Mashpee colors, blue and white. So many people were dressing up and very involved in Spirit Week. Mashpee Middle High School also had its first pep rally since before COVID. Last Friday, we were able to see a wonderful performance by the cheerleaders. I don't know what that word is. Performance. Just missing a little bit.
It was the French spelling.
Performance by the cheerleaders and eight students. And eight students of each of the high school grades were selected as homecoming court to participate in the four relay races that deciphered, determined which grade would win the relays of the pep rally of 2022. Of course, the seniors won. They did an amazing job and their win was well deserved. Usually not, but okay. The pep rally was surely an evening to remember and coming from someone who had never experienced a pep rally before, it was absolutely amazing. I just want to say thank you to all the teachers, adults, and student representatives of each grade that made this pep rally possible. The same day of the pep rally, Mashpee's football team had their homecoming game in Bourne. So many people showed up and really supported Mashpee. It was overall a really fun night. The following day, Saturday, homecoming took place in the cafeteria at MMHS and the theme was disco. The dance was so incredibly fun and I just want to thank everyone who put effort into it and made it what it was. This Monday, the 17th, four students from the chorus program ran by Ms. Mills, sang Easy on Me by Adele at the start of the town meeting. The girls who performed all did an incredible job, all thanks to the help and direction of Ms. Mills. And it included Delia, just so you know. She didn't write that. On the weekend of October 1st and 2nd of 2022, many students in Mashpee volunteered through sports teams, specifically the field hockey team, along with teachers and coaches at the Falmouth Marathon Race. That weekend was very sociable and what I felt to be a very good experience. People handed out snacks, soups, and other items to the runners who had just finished the race. Lastly, on October 22nd, from 10 to 12, environmental club members will be going to beach cleanup at South Cape Beach if the weather permits. This is it for the evening. Thank you all so much for your time and I look forward to seeing you all again soon. Thank you, Delia. So I have first a little update on school year 22 to 23. Quickly, all open houses took place and they were all very well attended. The district participated in Orange Shirt Day on the 30th of September, which was to bring recognition and understanding of the Native American boarding schools and the trauma that that has inflicted on so many families. There were two voting days so far at Quashnet on 9/6 and 10/4, and we have one coming up on 11/8. The Coombs and Quashnet PTO sponsored barbecue on 9/16 was a beautiful evening, beautiful green field, and very well attended. On the 30th, we also hosted our Southport Falcons annual bus tour, which is the first time in a few years we've done that. Really good feedback. They enjoyed every one of the places they visited. The Grade 10 DC trip, probably Dr. Manette might share a little bit about that. That was successful from 10/2 to 10/5. At the Quashnet School, Mary Kate probably will be talking about the 18th century Through Their Eyes event that was held for grades three and five. We already talked about homecoming, game and dance, conferences. There's a half day tomorrow at the Quashnet School and the Coombs School, well, early release day for students. And again, next Tuesday, four parent-teacher conferences, their afternoon and evening. The new sign from Mashpee Middle High School at the entrance went up today and I believe the building signage is being changed tomorrow. That's supposedly happening. And then STEM Week is all this week and I did participate in a Zoom presentation that Amanda Howe did for other school districts, sort of giving them the how-to to start a robotics program and get their teams up and running. That was, I think, Monday. The next item is a professional development that we've had. We had the half day on the 26th of September and we had Dr. Khaleese Warnham. She's going to be working with us for three years. That was the first time she came to work with smaller groups and she worked on cultural proficiency, the continuum of that. And so at that middle high school, the health and wellness department, English department, science department, they are the ones working this year with Dr. Warnham. And then at the Coombs School, pre-K K and 1 are working with her. And so we have a cycle to make sure we've got all of our educators working with her over the three years. And then the balance of that day was with school-based resources so that everyone knows what's available in terms, mostly it's a personnel piece. And then on 10/7 was our full PD day. I don't know if Dr. Hansken wants to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Some of our staff attended the K-Pod Collaboratives All Cape Day. So our special area subjects went, our world languages, most of those teachers went, the BCBAs. There are some, some subgroups went to various professional development opportunities through All Cape Day and provided really great feedback. They had great experiences, especially our specialists, because so much of what we do is around, you know, ELA or math or science or, and our specialists don't always get topic-specific professional development opportunities. So we're always grateful that we can send them to the All Cape Day, which corresponds with our data day. So everyone else stayed back in the district and we spent the day looking at MCAS data, STAR data, and additional benchmark data from the fall for our students. And we looked at it by standard and so we compared sort of our students' performance against the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks and then did a problem-solving protocol around interventions to increase and improve their achievement against the standards. So that took pretty much the entire day. They also did the DESA, which is our social-emotional universal screening tool. So every grade except 11 did the DESA for their students. Grade 11 somehow Power School did not talk to DESA for grade 11 homerooms. We don't know why. So Sean Maroney has fixed that and they're going to do it another day. And the end result of that data analysis day was, after going through the protocol, was coming up with a hypothesis for, we looked at subgroup data as well as full aggregate data and coming up with hypotheses and action steps to provide interventions around the areas, the problems of practice that were discovered. And they use their PLC time, which are those Monday morning meetings, to check in on the progress and see how it's going. So I think that is pretty much a summary of the day and I'm looking over at my colleagues to see if I missed anything. All right.
Just slightly related to that is the individual reports of MCAS performance for 2022 were mailed home to families yesterday. So I don't know if they, you got them today? They went?
Not yet. They got mailed. They haven't received them. Sorry. I was talking as a parent.
And that was, you know, grades three all the way through 10. We should have gotten theirs. Next pages are the enrollment and personnel updates. I don't know if you have any questions on the enrollment. You have a, the one in the original packet had an error that we fixed today. So anyway, you can see that the enrollment currently sits at 1463 with 141 school choice students for this school year. If you sort of go diagonally, you can see from last year at this point, you know, so from pre-K to K, it's an increase of 21 students. So you can sort of see where there's increases. And then obviously from grade eight to nine, we're, you know, down eight students from last year and then also down eight students from grades nine to 10. But anyway, and then you see specialized information as well on that sheet. I feel a question coming from Mr. Myers.
Yeah, so I tried to go out to Desi to answer this question and I wasn't able to find it quickly. How many school choice students did we have last year compared to this year?
127.
12, okay, so we're up.
We're up.
14. Okay. So it's really.
This is also just for the last three years.
Okay. So it's really the choice students is the reason why we're 1463 versus 1457 last year?
Well, I mean, there's movement in and out in the other areas too.
Right, but the net gain is due to the choice students.
Not necessarily. I mean, like, we don't know how big the senior classes this year relative to what it was last year.
Yeah, you do. That's what you have here.
Well, 111, the last year's senior class was 114 and this year's is 115.
Right.
But like, I know, like.
Using that as an example.
Mary Kate, in terms of the Quashnet School, there's generally like, in the summer, you generally talk about like 30 in and.
Great. To me, it just shows how important having school choice and being able to promote school choice is to us. I think that's the bottom line for me. And that's what's helping, in my view, is what's helping sustain our enrollment. That's good.
Okay, then you also have the employee changes there as well. Not as much movement as you might have had in the previous packet. We do have three retirements this year, well, not this year, now. But I'm going to talk about those under acknowledgements. And so you also have in here the athletic director's fall sports report and Consuelo, our outreach director's report, which is really good reading. You should really make sure to read that summary sheet because she's very much involved with wonderful activities. I was going to ask each principal if they wanted to share a little bit, like a couple of minutes of anything in your school. And I know that Dr. Goulart couldn't be here this evening, but we do have Mr. Pranah. Why, anyone good? Oh, unless you don't want to.
Oh, you can't say that. That's ridiculous. So why don't Mary Kate go first?
Just something quick, some highlight.
You can have it, whatever.
I'll have to take this.
Good evening, everyone. I will share a little bit about 18th century and Through Their Eyes. And well, before COVID, we used to have a program here. It was a hands-on program that Alicia Franklin organized and brought to fifth grade and it was called Colonial Day. And now we had a little respite with two years of COVID where no one came in. But we started talking about bringing this program back because it was a great activity, hands-on activity. You might remember the cannon out in the front yard with the Yarmouth Minutemen here. But this year, we decided to expand that perspective and we worked with the Wampanoag Tribal Education Department. And Darius was really instrumental in working with Mrs. Franklin to bring a broader perspective. And so we moved this hands-on, interactive presentation out to the field behind the school. There were six different stations. Three were Wampanoag stations and three were Yarmouth Minutemen stations. But it really presented the life in 18th century Cape Cod. So students loved every minute of it. They were able to shoot a bow and arrow. They visited a campsite, a kitchen-type campsite with the lean two from another Wampanoag station. And then Yarmouth Minutemen, they had quill pens and they were writing and they were learning about the militia and how to march. They were doing just a variety of things. It was absolutely a wonderful day and we were so happy. We had such a beautiful weather for the kids to be outside. So it was overall just a great success for our third and fifth graders who really participated in that. The piece that I think that made it even better this year was that both Darius and Alicia, Mrs. Franklin, went into the third and fifth grade classrooms the following day. And then they were able to follow up in even more detail and more specific questions that students might have in a small homeroom setting. So we were really happy to be able to follow that up and overall, I think it was a great success. So I am really grateful for both of those people to, for all the work they put into organizing the 18th century Through Their Eyes. And the blog has some great pictures, so if you want to check it out, feel free.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Brian Pranah. I'm the assistant principal over at KCC filling in for Dr. Goulart today. So we've had a lot going on at KCC that's been pretty exciting. To kind of start off, this month is fire prevention month. So firefighter Lenny, who works at the fire department, is going to be visiting every single classroom this month to talk about fire prevention and fire safety. He also gives out one of these cool hats to every single kid after he does his presentation, which is extremely engaging and the kids absolutely love it. And he gets the fire department in, not just for fire drills, so they see them also as like helpers around the entire community. I was going to talk about the incredible field trip to the cranberry bog. I actually got the go on it, which I was very happy about. It was fantastic. I had a great time. It really kind of kicked off too. One of the students said the bus ride was the favorite time. I had the privilege of being on the same bus as Catherine and her paraprofessional in her classroom, Linda Ryan, who was doing the speaking, which was asking the questions, as well as Ms. Wilson and Ms. Malone. They were singing songs like Wheels on the Bus, like the ABCs, and the kids were just having a blast. They were very quiet on the way home, which was nice. They're pretty tight.
Well, because the preschoolers don't take the bus.
They don't. They don't. They were so excited to be on the bus. So excited. This month also too, we kicked off our Read to Me program with volunteers. They'll be visiting KCC twice a month and visiting, start reading to our pre-K classrooms. Very excited about that. We also met with Consuela, our executive admin assistant, Jen Smith. And they are working on additional opportunities for volunteers to come into the school and do different kind of engagement techniques, maybe just be at recess into the cafeteria and just have more adults around and volunteering to be with kids. We also have 14 fall extracurricular clubs at KCC right now, after school. And we currently have, I hope this number is right, I'm going to say it out loud, 161 students signed up for after-school clubs that staff, our actualers, that staff are leading those clubs and participating in. And we have the transportation piece after school, which is absolutely incredible. Kids need the after-school bus, which is great. And last but not least, our Mashpee Police Department, Officer Hennessy and Officer Cogswell visited all the pre-K classrooms this month as well for community helpers. They shared out the police keeps the community safe. They got to go outside. They were, at one point, they were doing the alarms and stuff on their cars, so I had to be like, what's going on? But it's just them outside hanging out with the police officers, making sure they feed them as helpers. To kind of build on what Mary Kate was saying too, check out our blog. There's lots of pictures on the blog. There's everything you could possibly imagine that we're doing throughout the week and previous week up there and also on Twitter, follow me or. on Twitter, following me or Dr. Goulart.
Thank you.
Do you want to see it? I mean, I wore it around today, so it's pretty good.
There you go.
It's pretty good. And this is squeezing.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Dr. Monet. So Delia always just does a very comprehensive job of reporting out. You know, student-wise, it was my first time experiencing a pep rally. I didn't grow up with a football team in my high school, so this was a whole new experience for me and for them. And I thought I was going to high-five them as they're all running through and realize, like, there's no way I'm stopping this football team. I'm just going to say it again. I'm just so impressed with the student body. They are just an amazing group. And, and I don't know if they're just excited that we're back to normal, if this is the norm. For me, like, I keep saying to everybody, high school kids are just amazing. And even the middle school students are just, I think the blend of seven through twelve just adds a nice mix. The pep rally was great. The homecoming was great. The Washington, DC trip, I've told everybody, we were complimented everywhere we went. People would come out of their way and say, oh, my gosh, your group was so great. You know, our last night there, we were on a dinner cruise with two eighth-grade other groups, and this one woman was there with a group from California. God bless her. She was with the eighth graders for a week and she came over and caught me and just said, I just want to let you know, your kids were so great with our kids. Like, thank you so much. And they were out on the dance floor and they were all dancing. And it was a very exhausting trip, but it was a very amazing, just to see the 10th graders and the replay ceremony, just tears, absolute tears. The staff, I feel like we're finally catching our groove, like, clubs are up and running. We had our first SBLT meeting today and it was a pretty awesome show of, I kind of tapped the department heads to get as many as they could in their department to join us. And by the time I left the library and went downstairs, I got an email from a teacher and said, I have two more that are joining. They're motivated bunch. And going back to the day-to-day, I've never been part of a day-to-day, and it was really eye-opening just to see how motivated these, these teachers are, just to dive in and look at data and to have that much time to look at the whole, whole profile. And that was really our push today for the SBLT is, like, what are, what are we doing here? What, like, we have to create a whole picture of what's going to make our students successful. It's all good. I know, I could just keep going.
SBLT.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, School-Based Leadership Team. And honestly, it's a first for me because I was like, let's define it. That was like the number one agenda. I don't, what are we doing here? And I talked about what's going well, what's not going well. It's, it was a, it was a really productive meeting.
We have them at all.
Yeah.
I, I've heard of them. I just didn't know by the acronym.
So, any questions? I just shot out emails. I know you two got them about the eighth and ninth grade DC trips. You got it too, as well?
Yes.
Every single one, okay.
No, no pressure.
So you had to see the back and forth about what happened, but yes.
No pressure, but just so you know, the bar's kind of high for this eighth-grade field trip since almost every school committee member has a child.
Yeah.
So SBLT said, who's going with the eighth grade on the watchout? I was like, I'm out. I did, I did the maiden voyage and I made sure it was like a smooth trip, smooth sailing. I don't know if I can do eighth grade, but-
So Dr. Monet just asked me on our way, walking down here, hey, do you want to go to eighth grade trip?
And I'm not done with that conversation. You know what? You need somebody with energy and excitement. And it's exhausting. No, we're not done with that conversation. Anyway, so eighth and ninth grade are launching. And I'm hoping it's just, it's a great trip. It is.
I would, I would have loved to see, like, the report out from the trip. Like, I don't know, we just have-
Some of the students.
Yeah, like, kind of like we did for the Rome-
Maybe when it's the high school term.
Yeah, because I'd love to-
So I'm actually going to have the 10th graders, we just decided to SBLT. I'm used to having class meetings every month. I don't think we need to have them every month there, but we've decided we're going to have one every quarter. So I can be in front of the student body to talk about just issues and stuff we need to address. Because they were saying some of the things, like, we talked about with the new cellphone policy and the new dress code, it's continued. And I'm amazed. We've had some glitches where we've had to speak to a couple of students, but nothing like I've ever seen. Usually it lasts a few weeks and then kids are, like, back on their cellphones. So they said, would you mind standing in front of them? But I'm having 10th graders report out to eighth and ninth grade about the DC trip, just to tell them, just to build the excitement. Because it was a really great group of kids.
Oh, good.
Yeah. And they were up and out. It's 7:00 AM on the bus and we didn't get home until 9:00 AM.
Your Twitter pictures were great, I have to say. I was like, what?
So it was fun. I, I feel like I hate to say I'm getting older because I've done this trip for a while, but it's like, I was at Thomas Jefferson, like, oh, gosh, I got to climb those stairs. It's fine. So, anyway, that's all.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the partnership, the Mashpee Public Schools, Wampanoag Pride Partnership Annual Hub on October 4. There are minutes that were spent out. We also have a president here. I was not, but the agenda was something that was developed. Any questions or anything that's really else?
No questions?
I didn't have any.
Next in your packet is my, or in your handout, I should say, that's where it landed, my goals. Just to walk you through what you have in front of you, you have our current plan for success. This is year two of our implementation. We've identified as a leadership team and also working with the broader team that included teachers, the focus areas that we're including for year two. So those are identified. Those are what I've built my goals from and as our, as our team. So if you go to page four of this packet, for the district improvement goal, it is continuing to make sure that we implement the plan for success. And the initiatives that we've highlighted for year two are those 10 items shown below. And so I will be providing evidence as we check in throughout this year on what I have done towards those particular goals. We also have a student learning goal for this school year, and it is, I will, my, my version of that goal. I will support educators in the consistent use of research-based instructional strategies to increase student engagement and to improve relationships with students, resulting in increased student agency and achievement. Each of the goals in this packet are tied to one of the pillars of this plan for success, and then I've tied them to the rubric that you'll look at when you assess or evaluate me. But you see action steps below the student learning goal. I will provide specific examples or evidence to support my accomplishing those steps. And then the last goal is the professional practice goal, which again, is developed by the, the leadership team. And the teachers have a version of this. If they chose to, they could also choose their own goal if they wanted. But this particular goal says, I will work collaboratively with administrators to guide and support educators in the explicit incorporation of Mashpee's Portrait of a Graduate competencies and descriptors into their daily lesson plans, objectives, instructional practices, and assessments. So this is how we are going to continue the work of Portrait of a Graduate becoming alive, being embedded, being something that students recognize in their learning and can identify that they've accomplished that. And then you see action steps under that as well. We did meet as the superintendent and evaluation subcommittee met. Mr. Whedon could not be there, but Mrs. Lewis was there. We did review those goals on the 28th of September.
Okay.
Recognitions and acknowledgements. So just quickly, we have three retirements. We have Deb McDonald, a paraprofessional, make sure it's on my other paper here. She retired effective September 30th after 14 years of service. Executive Administrative Assistant Cheryl McIntyre at this school, Quashant School, is retiring on October 28th. She has 28 years of service to Mashpee. And Tom Hoppinstat, who is a science teacher at Mashpee Middle High School, he, his official retirement date is also the 28th of October, and he's retiring with 23 years plus two months or so of service to Mashpee. So they will be invited back in June when we do our recognition, but we're kind of sad that those people are leaving our team. We wish them well. I want to acknowledge that the Mashpee Firefighters Union, Local 2519, in combination with the Mashpee Police Department, purchased a new griddle for the boosters, the, the food shack there at the stadium. So I wanted to give a shout out to them. I also want to give a shout out to my three principals. This is National Principals Month, and I just want to publicly express my gratitude for the dedication that these individuals show. They're very student-centered leaders. They happen to be all female leaders this year. But what we do in trying to move the district forward could not happen without the collaboration of these individuals. I could not do my job without them. And I have been a witness, I know that Dr. Monet's newer to the district, but in a short time, I've been able to witness what our principals do on a daily basis. And it's, it's just a huge responsibility to make, you are responsible for pretty much every aspect of your building, particularly, you know, number one is safety and making sure everyone is secure, the physical space, the resources that teachers need, the emotional support that families need, that teachers need, that students need. No two days are alike. What you start, what you think your day's going to look like is never what your day looks like. But these individuals do it with a positive attitude. They're very upbeat. They're good problem solvers. They put students first and try to resolve issues. And I just want to say from the perspective of the Mashpee Public Schools that we are truly lucky to have the three principals that we have. And I appreciate them every day. Have a little something for you.
Oh.
I have Deb's, which maybe Mr. Pranah would like to deliver to Goulart.
We also appreciate all of our assistant principals.
There must be a separate date for assistant principals.
Yeah.
Upcoming events you have in your packet, I just wanted to give a little, point out that tomorrow there is a flu vaccine and COVID booster clinic for anyone interested at Christ the King, 9 to 12. And then in terms of the MMHS Stadium project update, I participated today in the sort of final, it was a punch list meeting up at the field. And so we have tentatively scheduled a ribbon cutting for 4:30 on Monday, the 24th, which is next Monday. What's perfect about it, hopefully the weather will, will support it, but anyway, we have not had any of our senior nights for our fall sports, and they are all scheduled for next week, which is great. The first game that will be played on the field will be the girls varsity soccer. They have a five o'clock game that day and it is also their senior night. Later that evening is a varsity field hockey game on that, on the field. And then Thursday night will be a boys soccer game, and that's their senior nights. And Friday night is the football game, and it will also be senior night for golf cheering and cross-country, although I don't have, think we have any seniors there. Obviously volleyball senior night will be in the gymnasium at some point, but we're super excited that so many teams are going to get to have their chance next week to play on that field. And it looks beautiful. Today, they were doing the lining of the track, which is fascinating to watch because I can't imagine the pressure of doing that. Because if you screw that up, that is like, you know, you've messed it up. But what was interesting is that the person who, the company doing the signing said, oh, you know, some schools put, like, falcons in it. I'm like, oh. Well, so then Athletic Director Traveri and I walked over to, he showed us this graphic on the side of his truck. I said, I want home of the falcons on my track. So he goes, well, it's $100 a letter. I said, okay. So the athletic revolving account will be paying for that separately aside from the, anything related to that big project. So-
Wonderful.
Yes. That'll be right in front of the stadium. So they have a, they have a little bit of cleanup to do, but we are good to go for Monday. So- Oh, is it bad? Yes, but supposedly weather doesn't matter on an artificial field. However, it does matter for people attending. And there will be no colored drinks allowed in that stadium, no sunflower seeds, things like that. So that will be an adjustment for some individuals. And I don't really think any, anyone, male or female, should be wearing spiked heels. So if it's parents' night and you're coming out on the field, don't wear any spiked tissues. We like high heels. So hopefully you will get a formal invitation. We're working on those. We did let the committee know today, and then we also let the town officials know so that they could give a little bit of a heads up. There is no select board meeting that night, so it should be a good night for everyone to make it.
Where does one cut a ribbon?
I don't, no, we have not worked out the logistics of the ribbon cutting.
Just go to the field.
Yeah.
We will be brainstorming that in the next day or so.
Finish line of the track.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. Someone, who said they had the big pair of scissors? I think it was the town manager said that. Yeah. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Mrs. Vindetsky's good at that. Okay, so that completes my section. Anyone have any questions on that? Although I think I will be doing part of Ashen's section, too. Okay, next up is the Director of Finance. You have in the packet the FY23 pages update, and then you had as a handout FY24 information. So the FY23 shows sort of the budget to actual as of the 14th. On page 13 of the packet, you have revolving account balances on page 14. You have school choice, revenue and expenditures on page 15. I will say, if you have specific questions on these three pages, you probably want to email Jess Loops. Then in the additional packet that was at your place, you have a copy of the memo for the FY24 budget that was sent to the town manager on September 30th. The deadline was by October 1st, I believe. So our FY24 budget, or our draft FY24 budget, which at this point is my budget, has been put into munis. And you can sort of see some of the narratives. And then also the capital improvement, which includes DPWs specific to the school, and then our specific school requests are there. And we did talk with Catherine Laurent today in terms of the, the, what was that called?
The thing for the objective, oh, the, oh my gosh, engineering scope.
The, what would you saw? There was, the, the study?
The feasibility.
Feasibility. Anyway, no, yeah.
Sorry, COVID brain. The next section, the next part of the Coombs HVAC project.
Which was going to go before CIP separately, is about a month off of. And because it's reached, it's a certain amount, it has to go out for bid.
The engineering study.
Yes.
Engineering, so.
So, so it's, Catherine's getting the paperwork ready to go out for bid on that, but that's going to slow it a little bit. So where we thought we were going to already sort of have had our CIP meeting by now, it's not.
That should be in law.
Yeah. That's for the Coombs HVAC project.
So maybe December.
Probably match up with all the other ones. Any thoughts?
So, well, it kind of bleeds into the finance working group update.
So, anyone have any questions for Patty?
I do have a question. So, and maybe we've covered this previously and I'm just having a, a brain fog. But where do we stand? So we're going to do an engine, we're going to spend how much, $100,000 on it?
I know it's much more than that.
Or like 700,000.
Seven, 700 for an engineering study for-
Well, it would have laid it off. I mean, someone would then take that and be able to start the work. It's, it's not just like, it's the blueprint of the work.
It's the actual first step in doing the work.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And, and so, does that also then come back with a better estimate of what the total cost would be from that?
I would think that if I were going to bid on the actual work, if I took this document, it would inform me in terms of costing it out. I think I would need that to accurately cost it out.
Right.
Yeah, so-
So it goes closer to that.
It's closer to that.
Yes, but not a definitive estimate.
Okay. And then where, where are we at in regard to, I guess, being a- And then where, where are we at in regard to, I guess, being able to pay for the results of that work to take it to completion?
So I would imagine, and Ashley would have to speak more closely, I'm not sure we have the full amount in using our Esser money and our school choice reserve that we put aside. I, Catherine did indicate today that when they go sort of for this building bond, which allows them to make improvements over.
10 years?
10 years, that there are some other, in addition to what we already know with Town Hall and the Police Department, there are some other projects going into that as well in terms of sort of a 10-year bond for building improvements.
Okay.
She mentioned that today.
Timeline for that is?
Maytown meeting.
Maytown meeting.
They're going to, they intend to bring it to Maytown meeting for, and that would cover the high school and caution.
And any shortfall.
And any shortfall at Coombs.
Okay. But what the intention that we're using, sorry, in, in school choice funds?
In the near term.
In the near term.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Yep.
I just wanted to point out, so with the next item, which is just about on time, is the, so Kathy and I met with Ashley and Hope and Patty for the finance working group. And one of the things that I was struggling with is when, because we have this, we have the, the town approved, we have our budget, we have the town approved budget, the appropriated budget. And so when, normally when we look at, when we talk about the budget being a 4% increase over our last year's budget, it's usually the enacted budget. And so I guess I just wanted you to weigh in, Dawn and Matt, if you guys have any opinions, because it's, we sort of went around and around about it a little bit, and I, since we don't have like.
I know, I just don't have that one-page summary.
She had like a one-page summary that we went over that sort of put them side by side, and she must not have resolved it to her satisfaction, because it's not.
Okay, because we had come up with a third option that we wanted that was different from, right? Because we wanted a total.
But she does say in here, so I'm noting on this app, like, for example, the backside of the first page, for the technology request, and then this total is an increase of 1. something million or 4% over the FY23 budget. And so we're just going to have to make a decision about what we're referring to.
Yeah, because the, the piece was trying to capture the $400,000 reduction in town funding that was not approved by school committee and not, not bearing that, just making sure that it was recognized, because we technically didn't change our budget, and we just got less funding from the town, so.
And there are things we're not doing based on the fact that we didn't get the full budget. So I, I think it would be over our enacted budget, not our proposed budget. But we just wanted to, but that's going to, it's going to look like we're requesting, it's a, well, this happened the last time he did this, right? So, so our percent increase is going to look very large, but it just reflects like making up what we didn't get last year, basically. So Dawn, do you have any thoughts?
Ultimately, you know, in theory, our budget that revised based upon the appropriation, that was all the money that we got. And from an appropriation standpoint, and so, you know, if we're asking for 4.28% based on that, what that number was for, for this year, I'm not surprised, right? Because our costs went up year over year, and there's only so much that we can take out of school choice to make up for it. So, you know, it is what it is. And I'll, I'll, I'll reserve judgment until the school committee comes up with their view of this in January.
So at the November meeting, you will have the first draft of the budget narrative to tell our story.
Yeah, so it's mostly just giving you a heads up.
Yeah.
But that, we kind of discussed it, but we didn't make a decision. And it was more just like, Ashley, I think, you know, we always want our, our increases to look very prudent and, you know, not necessarily austere, but, you know, justifiable and ideally small.
Right.
But, you know, now instead of having to hire, you know, a single ELL teacher next year, we're going to need two, because we didn't hire the one we wanted to hire this year. So there are real increases in there that we're going to have to fight for at a time when we're also advocating for upgrades to our HVAC.
I think also it's important to note that we were asked to provide a level service budget last year, which is what the school committee supported. And so, and we're asked to do a level service budget again this year, but the services haven't changed, so that's the gap as well. And if you think about it from the service, level service, which is what all the other parts of the town were given and asked to do.
I mean, has he ever asked for anything but a level service budget?
Yes, there's been level funded.
Level funded, yes, it's happened. I, I mean, from my perspective, we've got to, I don't have a full appreciation yet of our budget and the impact of unfortunately inflation, which everyone has experienced, and how that is correlated to us, us being able to maintain a level service to our students and for our faculty and staff. So that's one of the things I'm hoping to get a better understanding of between now and January.
Yeah, I noted she, for the special education, add district costs, she mentioned inflation in the memo.
It's got a notice that it's 14.7% for O S D. Is that in there?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't know if the note included. Increase is not even an appropriate word.
Well, yeah, and that's the thing that I think, like, you know, if you're taking a realistic look at it, it's like, you know, if everything already is going up, like, you know, just the general way we operate day to day as it is, is costing more in the long run. So even if we did provide the same service across the board, it's just going to cost more to do that, you know, on everything else. So.
Anything? No, I think you covered, I mean, there really was just how are we presenting that difference from what our level funded budget was to what was provided by the town? And that was kind of what the discussion of that meeting was. So I think we'll just, like Dawn said, have to wait until November when we see, you know, see the draft and kind of go from there.
Do you have anything from the evaluation, other than what Patty mentioned?
No, I mean, we had a lovely chat about the goals, and that was that, kind of, and I, I think, you know, we're, I, I thought they were good goals, so.
So one thing I would request is, I feel like the evaluation, we're always on our heels. It feels like we're always on our heels when it comes around. And I think it's because budget comes, and when we finally get that done, I feel like it's like, you know, and then everybody kind of relaxes. But I would just, I don't know if we have, share a, like a, a schedule? Okay, so maybe just to put that out, and maybe you can have a look at that and see if you want to make, you and Brian want to make any adjustments to it. But it always feels like this, like not enough time.
Well, because you, I mean, there's a midterm sort of share out, but then I share out in April, and then it's done before the election.
Yeah.
That's why.
Yeah, so maybe if we can't do anything about the schedule, at least make, making sure we have it all on our calendar, so we kind of know what we're going to have to be doing. Okay. Student Advisory Committee, next.
So I met with Dr. Monet. We had a lovely talk about, we kind of like went over the law and, you know, how, how it's going to be organized. And I believe Brian Brody, the History Department Chair, was talking to Dr. Monet also about a few things in terms of student government and building back up the student government. Correct me if I'm wrong in any of this.
Yeah.
I, I did, I just didn't get a chance to reply to it, but I have some questions on it, because it's a little different, I think, than what we were, what this says. But I guess a student has been identified, I don't know if there's been an election held, like, that was one question, because we do need to have, like, according to this, it's like an elected body. So I got to follow up a little bit still, but we are moving forward, and there is apparently definitely interest in having, we have someone who is definitely interested in being our representative in terms of like a government-type, non-voting school committee member. So we are making.
He answered the law, and he's a junior, so we have him for two years. So I think the next step, we have to bring everybody in to the next meeting, so that everybody can agree to vote.
Yes.
But was this student elected by the student body?
There was an election, I don't know what.
So, yeah.
A lot of student body, community government, student council groups, I'm trying to figure out what this was.
It doesn't say a student body, it says the student body.
Yes, so it was, yeah, so there, like I said, there's, I think, some questions that I saw kind of quickly as I was switching gears from work to here, so I didn't get a chance to ask all of the questions, but I know that prog, we are making progress, and we might need to regroup and kind of just touch base again. But I didn't think this was going to be an overnight process, just saying that, I knew it was going to take a little time. I did also find the handbook that I meant to send you, I found the, for student representatives, there is a handbook that I need to send to you as well. So that's kind of where this is at.
Well, my understanding, and I guess Principal Monet can weigh in as well, but I, I thought we were really kind of shooting for this for the next school year. Like, we weren't trying to get this in place for this school year necessarily, because we had DeLeah as kind of our.
I understood we were trying to get it for this year, but that was.
I feel like if we don't move.
Yeah, I feel, yeah.
Momentum in that.
I think it has to be this year, just so we can, so we can build it up for next year. I think once we get it started, then we can start getting, because the five students that this body is supposed to be comprised of with the one representative who comes to the meetings, I think it needs to get started now. That's my personal opinion, so that we can build it up and next year have the election in September for the five students and the, and kind of get, get the ball rolling in that sense. So like, we get, we missed kind of some of these dates, but if we can get it in place by June, because I think that's the date on here for June each year, have the election. So I think.
Well, I guess that's why I was, I was keying in on that June date, so I thought we're not doing this this school year, but we are.
That was my hope, but, I mean, where it's brand new, I don't know if that precludes us from that specific date, you know what I mean? Where we're trying to start it, I, I don't know if we're precluded from the dates on this, which I can, I can find out more information on that, but.
Well, I, I mean, we really haven't, as a committee, had a, a proper conversation about this.
We haven't.
Yeah, so I guess, and I mean, we can do that now, I, I'm, right now, we do not have a student advisory committee that, that complies with this.
Nor a student representative, no.
Okay. So, and you guys have discussed a plan to create a student advisory committee?
Correct.
Made of high school students?
That was my understanding, yes.
And there is one of those, one of those five people would be our.
Representative.
And they would sit at this table, be a non-voting member, they wouldn't be here to provide updates from the school the way DeLeah does.
They can provide updates from the school, but they are a non-voting delegate. They could, they can have an agenda item, just like superintendent, any subcommittee, because they would almost be like a subcommittee, so they would be able to provide the share out as well.
Okay. And then what happens to DeLeah?
We can still have, I suppose, her input, but she could be part of the five person body, but if she wanted to run and become elected as that representative, that's, you know, that would be, it's not a handpicked thing, it's supposed to be representative of the students.
Right.
And not necessarily supposed to be a share out of just, you know, clubs and whatnot. It's supposed to also be addressing student body issues as perceived by the students. They're like a representative, kind of taking the information from the school committee back to the student body and saying, okay, at the school committee meeting, they were talking about the level funded budget, this is why the budget, you know, and explaining, like, they need an ELL teacher, like, and kind of letting the students know things like that, or coming to the school committee in those meetings that we have to have with this group and saying, you know, we really need funding for this thing, or, you know, bring issues that are under the purview of school committee to the school committee. It's like a.
But, so as a ex officio member, though, they would have to follow the same rules as far as, they, I don't believe that they would have just a blanket agenda, that the only time the school committee would be aware of it is at the meeting. That, that to me doesn't make sense.
Yeah, no, they would.
So they would have to submit items to be on the formal agenda in advance?
Yes.
Okay.
And we would, and we would have an every other month, we have to, the law states you have to have an every other month meeting with them, and at that meeting, we could discuss what they would want to bring if we wanted to put that in there. There is a requirement that we meet with them.
With the entire school committee?
As, I read that, yes. But whether that happens prior to this meeting, on the same night, whether we have a, you know, a time prior to our normal business meeting and make that the time, we hadn't gotten to that point in the discussion, because we hadn't had this type of a discussion yet. So that was one thing I was not sure how that would work in terms of us, but in my mind, adding, you know, I, I'd be willing to do that, but that's me.
Is there anybody doing this right on Cape Cod?
On Cape Cod that I'm aware of? No. But off Cape, yes. Very effectively.
Question from the audience? Yes.
Oh, they do? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So maybe we could reach out to Bourne and learn a little bit from that.
Sure.
Who's, who do we know on the Bourne School Committee? The guy, the guy I knew were.
I know, I know. Yeah.
I've just.
I do know a member.
Who's on, who's on the collaborative from Bourne?
I'm not sure.
So picture yourself at the table.
I'm picturing myself at a TV.
Screen?
On the screen.
Oh, it's virtual.
Nice try.
Ninety-eight percent of the people are Zoom.
Gotcha.
I'm, I'm trying to picture, wish little box was.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Gotcha. Okay. All right, so.
So there's, there's, there's kind of, the main pieces are, one, the student advisory committee itself of the five members with the one elected to be the representative to this table. The second piece is the meetings that are required by us with them every other month. It's, I believe that's how.
The whole group?
Again, as I read it, yes. The school committee may designate a student outreach coordinator to establish it, but it doesn't say anything about. This doesn't, this, yeah, at least once every other month.
Okay.
So, as I read that, yes, the entire committee, or at least a.
Well, because it does, like that last part, a school, a school committee may designate a student outreach coordinator, which feels like one of the five.
For the purpose of establishing.
The establishment of the advisory and regularly informing the advisory committee of the school committee's agenda.
So it could be either way, I suppose, it's a little.
All right, well, I guess, so what's next?
So next, I guess, is reaching out to Bourne and finding out how they manage it, and then setting up the meeting with Mr. Brody, Dr. Monet, and us, I suppose.
So we can reach out, find the Bourne piece, and then we'll connect to you. And what's, Mr. Brody and his capacity as department chair for the student. And what's, uh, Mr. Brody and his capacity as department chair for student council?
Student council advisor.
When he is that, what you said too.
No, but it doesn't necessarily have to fall under him for this.
I think he just picked up the mantle, if I'm not mistaken.
Trying to revive student council. So we've had meetings about what it looks like, and getting leadership, and so I think he's the one that was the most willing to be like, yeah, we could do this, it's an elective, elective body. But I think we just need clear guidelines. Could he come to the next school committee meeting and you could have it? Cause it, it needs to be the whole committee.
Well, you're probably gonna have to talk to him between now and then.
Between now and then, so.
Is it possible to kind of define a term of reference for this group? Cause I'm a little.
Hopefully Bourne has one.
A term of reference, like how long they have as a term?
No, 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 no.
Operating from like.
Oh, more than this piece of paper.
Yeah.
I can get the information from the Summer Institute, cause this was all stemmed from the Summer Institute class that I went to for MASC in July. This, they had a whole, it was like a half day, like three, we spent like, I feel like three hours talking to two different school districts that had effectively done this. They had both the student reps and the teachers who were their advi, actually, student reps and the school committee members presenting. And, uh, they did this whole, but that's where this stemmed from, was listening to them speak and me going, wait a minute, our student rep is not following this law. And that was why I was like, we need to either look at how our student rep is versus what this law says. So that's where this whole came, this whole thing came from.
And, and, and I'm, I'm supportive of that, I just think we need to have some formal guidelines of how it's going to work so that, um, going forward, um, the students, the faculty, administration, and the school committee all know, uh, how things work, you know, kind of similar to, um, the guidelines that the school committee itself has.
I'll reach back out to the MASC rep who ran the course as well and see if she can provide us with that information as a whole. You know, and email it to us, um, whether it's the presentation or just the information that she had.
Great. So would we put it on the agenda for next, for November, just to keep revisiting progress? I would for, for now, pretty long. But hopefully we have more than just reporting on progress for the next one.
Yes.
Um, new business, the, uh, annual conference in Orlando. Is there anything you wanted to say about that, Patty?
No, I think, I, Sheri put some, um, information about it. I don't know who has indicated they are want to go.
Okay.
Which is described there.
I think I'm a strong, like, no. So I, that's why you haven't heard from me. I, I just have some work travel at that time and I don't think I could fit it in. So you don't have to carry the mantle.
No, we did not get elected to do, to be a presenter. We're on the waitlist.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we have a little bit of time.
But, but assuming aside better hotel options are.
Oh, yeah.
It's very true.
Um, okay, and let's see, items we didn't know about in advance. The one thing that, uh, I wanted to flag for the members is, um, you all received a, um, email that Patty forwarded from a parent about, uh, safety for kids during, um, elections. And, uh, as you know, the, the building was open. You know, the school was in session during, I don't know when you guys voted that day or if you were here. Uh, it was a bit of circus, I thought. Um, I was kind of surprised when I pulled in to see for what was a single ballot, single person election. Uh, you would have thought we were electing a new president with all the signs that were scattered across the school. And I thought it was way over the top. And it's pretty disrespectful of the fact that our kids were in school that day. Um, so I was a little, when I saw, I wasn't all that surprised when a parent reached out and said, uh, what? It was, I think, her kid, she's new to the Quashnet maybe or something, uh, so that was her first experience. Anyway, so we had a, um, an exchange with the town manager, um, who is, let's just say, opening a conversation about maybe some changes that can be made. Um, and to my mind, this has a little bit of urgency to it, because the, the next election is also on a school day. So November eighth. Um, so we are, Patty's talking to Rodney, and I just wanted you guys, I told Rodney, if he's taking something in select board to just let me know and I'll show up, I'll, I'll be there for that, uh, discussion. Um, but if I get any information on that, I will share it with you guys for awareness. But I suspect all that will have been dealt with before we meet again, right?
Even I don't think anything's gonna change for any of the elections in this year.
Oh, I don't, I don't mean about locations or anything like that, more, uh, uh, I would like to see something change. So for example, you know, um, having the door, uh, between the gymnasium and the guidance counselor hallway, uh, like blocked off, so that people cannot go into the school that way. And having the back hallway blocked off so that, you know, poll workers need to use the bathroom sign, but that there's a separation between the students. And I think that for one of those voting days, uh, I said, um, is it okay if I, I thought I would have to explain to somebody who I was and why I wanted to cut through the school to go to the superintendent's office, because I had a meeting. And I was prepared for them to tell me, no, you have to go around. And, uh, the person I asked just went, and I thought, well, that's weird. This is, there's actual, this is actual school day in there. So I just think there are some, maybe we've gotten a little complacent about what it means to be in a school during an election. And as one of the people who advocated for, uh, us to not be having elections in a church, um, I am also sensitive to the fact that, you know, we had, during the school day and after things like the Baldi and, um, all these different, um, safety incidents, that people are gonna be hypersensitive to this and, uh, we need to satisfy that, um, that demand. Um, so we weren't overwhelmed with, that's the only email I got, we got as far as I know. Um, but, uh, it sort of gelled with my personal experience that day. And so it kind of resonated with me a little bit. So I think, I don't know, like, limiting how many signs can be on the lawn of our school during an election day would be reasonable to me.
We did talk to Catherine Laurent today, and I said, you know, we have November eighth coming up. And so whether there needs to be a divider in the back hallway that keeps anyone from going beyond the bathrooms. And then in the front, like, it's liable to be cold, so they're not gonna want the voters to go in that front gymnasium door through the vestibule, which is not there. But anyway, if they come in, there, there's also some accordion gates in one of those closets, I remember. Are they gone? Where are they? Anyway, those would have been great to put up in the front, so that the kids can still get to the nurse, which then you could get to the guidance suite if you needed to, but we need to stop, we just need to block off any access to.
I don't find giving up that, making them use the gym door.
Yeah, well, no, I, I, I would too, but.
It's not gonna be that cold.
No.
It's, it's New England, it's November.
Yeah.
How bad could it be?
I agree, that door's easy to sit out.
I think it's the poll workers.
Yeah, it's the poll workers, not the voters.
The school is the priority.
Yeah, I know, I know, but, but it's been this way for years, this challenge.
That's what I think, you know, they're gonna be the ones that would be complaining.
I know, Principal O'Brien would like to add her.
Yeah, do you have something else?
Not only the school access, but in the parking lot, where we have parents dropping off and picking up, we have the whole town crossing that line and not using sidewalks.
Right.
And parents are looking to the right, people are coming across to the left. I really don't want to pick people up out there.
Yeah.
And I don't want our kids subject to that, it's terribly dangerous. So, um, I would ask people to use a crosswalk. We definitely need police presence.
Yep.
On the crosswalk. And they should not be coming through school, which has happened.
Yep, so I, those are just the kinds of things that we were gonna talk to Rodney about. And I just want to say how, um, how committed I am to, you know, advocating for what you need in this building. Um, and also that, um, we, uh, we can do a lot better than what we're doing. I think it's just, there's just this longstanding practice that has just gotten a little, um, loosey-goosey.
It's also frustrating when I'm constantly sending people over to the left side. Our kids need to be able to come into the right side. I stuff cars at a lower point than just having them come all the way up. But when you have people who are holding signs and trying to bring the public, and they're on the side where our students need to be, and then having people car, so it's, I feel like I'm out there.
Yeah.
It's almost like they need to be staged on the grass away from that entry, you know what I mean? Like, maybe it needs to be a staging area for that. And I, I know they want to meet the people, but it has to be away from where the students are walking up and down. Because when I went to vote, I also was overwhelmed by the amount of signs. Um, it was more than I remember in recent elections. And I remember thinking to myself, this is overwhelming. And I was thinking, if I was a third grader being dropped off and I'm walking by all of this, like, on one hand, yes, there's a civic lesson to be taught of this is voting, this is what it looks like, this is, you know, people using their First Amendment rights and all great things that we want our kids to be exposed to. However, it was overwhelming for me as an adult. I can only imagine that third grader being dropped off by their parents, having to walk up that tunnel of signage and just, like, what's going on, you know? And I, maybe it's a staging area, like, again, I understand that candidates want to meet the people and give their last handshake and.
It's not even that they want to, there's some very specific election laws that designate where those areas are and, and.
It's a distance, and I understand that, but there's a distance in another location that still provides the ability to have the signs and maybe allow the meet and greets to those who wish to have them.
Well, I told Rodney that the, um, that you, what we have right now is what you have when you invested nothing and you're totally taking the existing infrastructure and, you know, layout and just using it for something else. So it's not designed to do what we're doing there. And we were promised a vestibule and some entry, um, accommodations to make this work smoother. Uh, we didn't get them, and so I feel like we have to deal with this now before it just gets worse, like for a presidential election or something crazy, which we would be closed for that. But, uh, but these open election days, I'm sorry, it's just, I'll get off my soapbox now, Dawn, and I can tell you one or two things.
Well, two, I, I, I guess, two things. Um, without going back and looking at the CIP, you know, we're, I thought there was supposed to be money to do a vestibule. Whatever happened to that?
It was not meant to be proposed by us.
No, I know, that was supposed to be.
It's been on there in the past, I don't know, they, at, at the point, well, the first time it was proposed was when the project was going on here for the windows and doors.
Right.
At that point, they actually had the schematic of it, it was at sixty thousand, I forget. It was gonna be extra. Um, it didn't get approved on the town side to do that extra piece, cause that was outside of the project. Um, and then the next alternative I heard was some sort of, um, temporary piece that, um, similar to outside of a restaurant kind of thing, an inner and outer. But then it's always either windy or stormy, and there were reasons why they couldn't put it up. And it was really not satisfactory.
Well, it seems to me that particularly if we're looking at doing a bond, uh, proposing to do a bond issue, that might be something that needs to be considered. The other thing, I, I guess, I'm just wondering, um, have we looked at potentially using the gymnasium at the high school, which does have a separate entrance that can be blocked off versus, and particularly if we're gonna do it during the day. Um, because you do have gates up there that can be closed, or close off areas.
Well, the only gate is from the calf into the.
Rest of the school, right?
Right, but that's not gonna help.
Block out the art, art rooms and music rooms.
It would, it wouldn't help, I mean, you could technically lock the, the gymnasium doors up there, but they would still need access to the two bathrooms right there, you still have the locker rooms. My preference in what the town manager had indicated he was gonna explore was dividing up the precincts. So you could have senior center, library, town hall, and that big first room, potential of other spaces for, um, it to be similar to what most of the other towns on the Cape do not have a single voting location like Mashpee, which is what draws candidates here so much, because, oh, I get every voter when I stand here.
I think also the parking is not.
Not gonna get better with a vestibule.
Well, to me, ultimately, the answer comes back to what we had several years ago, which is being able to do the voting, um, well in advance, which I think is what we did on the federal side, right?
I think you can still, you can currently do that.
With that particular election, we couldn't, because it was a town one, but this one right now that's coming up is early voting starts on the twenty-second.
Yeah.
Right, but, um, I don't know why, I don't know what's involved to be able to do early voting on the town side.
Well, that will not be my problem to solve, but we can talk to the town manager about that.
That, that's another option.
The select board can decide.
They can, they can deal with that. Or they can go back to joining on Saturdays, which is the way it used to be. And then they moved them to Tuesdays because they thought.
Yeah, more voters.
There'd be more voters, I'm not a hundred percent convinced.
But on any local, on town election, we could.
I mean, I, I think that the weather was not great on that day, because it would have been.
They had good numbers, though.
I mean, but, uh, like, the truck with the big banner, it looked like a tailgate out there, it was crazy. Anyway, if I, if I was a parent at that school, I'd have been.
I mean, let, let's just hope that we don't have to have a number of special elections like that in the future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, the only other thing too, you have at your packet is the, the joint conference in November. All of the offerings are in there, you probably, you might have gotten this version, I can't mail to you, but in case you didn't. And I think Sheri, you've registered everyone who said they were going?
Yeah, it's coming up fast, I guess.
Yes, it is.
Uh, the fifth is a Saturday.
Yes, but, oh, actually.
We delegate our. We have not voted for a delegate, and we need to vote for a delegate. And we don't have a meeting before that.
We don't have a vote scheduled for tonight.
Nope. I was last year. It's a vote, so I don't think we can. We might have to hold a special quick.
Well, we might end up needing an executive session for, um, some, uh, Unit A stuff, or Unit B. Oh, that's right, Unit C. To tell them not doing negotiations. Um, so we might, if, if we, we can just.
We can, yeah, cause that was probably gonna be a Zoom meeting, so we can do that. So we'll put those two items on.
I nominate Kathy.
And that's on Wednesday, the voting is on, they moved it to Wednesday. So that's actually Wednesday, and then Saturday is, um, it's like a student day.
Oh.
Um, part, they'll, they have a parliamentary procedures thing in the morning that I might check out, but, yes, voting is now on Wednesday.
Well, outstanding, things can change.
It is possible.
All right, um, I don't have anything else, um, so I think we're dispensed with the agenda, so I'm gonna call this meeting.
A jerk.